I'd like to call this meeting, this joint meeting of the town council and school board to order for October sixteenth at 6:00 PM. We'll begin, as always, with the pledge of allegiance. Councilor White, if you could lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor White. All right. I think the next thing on our agenda is to do a real quick introductions. So, hope we could start over here and just work our way around.
Hi, Phil Nazaro, school board member. Is that all we need? I don't know. Or is there more?
Favorite color? Favorite Halloween candy?
Halloween candy?
Yeah.
Candy corn.
Yes.
I know, I'm one of those people.
Mike Pitt is also one of those people.
It's dark and twisted up here. It's really, it's weird.
Lonnie Sebans, school board member, and Milky Way Dart or Peppermint Patty.
Dan Smith, school board member. I'm gonna go with the Butterfingers. Those are the ones that I hide at the bottom of the bowl and hope the kids don't see them.
Amy Tilton, school board, and Anything Chocolate.
Todd Allen, superintendent, and I'll go with a Reese's Peanut Butter Cup.
Gary Swanson, also school board, and I say Kit Kat.
Tony Conley, town council, and Reese's Peanut Butter Cups is the correct answer.
And his favorite color, red.
Steve Ford, your town manager, and I'd have to go with Gummy Bears. Make sure I say bears, so I don't get in trouble.
Justin Glazberg, town council, and I would say Reese's Pumpkins.
Joe Lamatina, town council, and Anything Chocolate.
Colin White, town council, Anything is a Reese's.
Brian Ward, town council, I guess I'm just gonna wrap it up by saying Reese's as well.
All right. Awesome. Thank you so much, everybody. Oh, perfect. We are doing introductions, name, role, and your favorite Halloween candy.
Halloween candy?
Yeah, it seems out of context when you're working here.
So, how happens when you come to Halloween?
My name is Zunkadonlu. I'm a baker up on Water Falls Road. If you ever need any bread, just give me a call. And I think that's probably my favorite Halloween candy.
Is bread?
Yeah. I'll just say that because I don't really have a clue.
All right. Well, thanks so much for everyone, and thank you so much for being here today. I know we've got a few sort of general areas of discussion, and they're in the areas of community growth, future projects and budgets, facilities, and community power coalition. So, I think we'll start, we'll start right away with that first area of discussion, community growth. And town manager, can I turn it over to you to provide a little bit of context?
Sure. We want to discuss a few things. One, the revaluation. As you know, we just completed the revaluation of all property in the town. By state law, we have to do that at least every five years. Just to give you some numbers for comparison, the council's gonna be getting my budget this evening, so I did a lot of research on the revaluation numbers. In 2023, the value of the town was $1 billion. In 2024, we're $1.7 billion. We had 70%. In 2014, we're $711 million. So, in 10 years, we've added 142% value to this community. It's not unusual for the seacoast. You can see it going on in every community if you read the papers. But it is, you know, it is a significant shock when you look at that property, your property value on the bill. One thing I always say when I hear somebody ask me that, I go, well, what would you sell your house for? Would you sell it for your assessed value? A lot of people say, well, no, I'd sell it for more than my assessed value. Well, that's what we look at, is the market value of property. Just to look at it also, that currently the tax rate, we haven't set this yet, we're hoping any minute now we will have a rate. The current rate is $29.49. If we had the current value at the time of setting the tax rate last year, the tax rate would be $18.19. So, an average home is $350,000, I'm sorry, $65,000. So, the bill would be with the $29.49, $11,332. And if it were, the average home is now gonna be $650,000. And the bill would be $11,823, or difference of $500 with the new valuation. And again, these are all estimates, they're not set in stone yet, but we just wanna give those numbers out there so people can get a comparison, because we don't want everybody panicking when they see their new value, because a lot of people don't realize that the rate drops at the same time. What it does show is that the seacoast, Newmarket and the seacoast is a hot housing market, which I don't think anybody is surprised. But it's also, what kind of housing markets is it turning into? We are not seeing young people coming into the community. We're not. And we're seeing either young professionals with no children or retired individuals. That tends to be the demographic we're seeing a lot more of. For example, I knew for a long time the Rockham Green was always supposed to be the starting home community, and the values are supposed to be at market rate for starter homes. They automatically went up to what the market rate is. And I believe at one point in time, there was like one child in the entire neighborhood. So, we're not just, we're just not seeing the growth there. We are seeing population expansion. We were almost 10,000 people where we were about a little under 9,000 when I first started here in 2012. So, we are seeing the growth of the population. Well, so why are we saying that? Well, we're under, we're going through the master plan process right now. And that's, for those who don't know, the master plan is our, you know, this is our master plan for what we want the community to look like in the next 10-plus years. And it's one of those discussions that if you would've told me when I started here 12 years ago, that we were having a discussion to allow more development in town, I would've said, okay, you're crazy, and I'd probably run out of town. And we literally, I was saying, we had economic development committees to not have economic development for certain development, because we wanted to limit the growth of the community. The reasons were real. We had issues with water, we had issues with sewer, we had issues with the schools. We no longer have issues with water, we have no longer issues with the sewer, and the schools, from my understanding, enrollment's dropping.
Absolutely.
So, I've asked the director of planning, community development, Bart McDonough, come in and talk about, you know, where we are with the master planning process, what we can see in the future for development, if we have land, and what kind of development we may wanna look at. And just so the both boards could ask him questions as well, of like the impacts of what your decisions could be in the next few years. So, Bart, if you wanna...
Do you mind if I, before we...
Sure.
So, first, thank you for Tony, Steve, and the rest of the board, everybody council. Excuse me, for the invitation, we appreciate it. I know when Tony and I met, we were looking forward to have an impromptu discussion. So, certainly, neither one of us wanna be the only people speaking tonight, so everyone should just feel free to jump in, I think is the goal. As far as the community growth, yeah, certainly we've seen a decrease in the number of students and obviously the number, the number of students in the other schools. But I think the decrease in the number of students in the community is also an issue of concern across, because school itself has a fair amount of extra capacity, which, you know, we certainly welcome those students.
Good evening. Like Mr. Ford said, my name's Bart McDonough, Director of Planning and Community Development. And, yeah, I was just start, first start of the master plan process. We're probably about six months or so into it, and we had a lot of community outreach with surveys, visioning sessions, and what we're really hearing is kind of, you know, two opposite ends of the spectrum, where we want housing, affordable housing, but we want reservation at the same time. And so, you know, it, they're really two important things to have in the community, I think, and I think they can be joined. So, through this master plan update, which has a lot more to it than just those two elements, but also through the planning board as well, we're looking at rezoning in certain areas of town right now to kind of answer those questions. How can we create affordability? How create more housing opportunities? And how can we, and with that, then, if there's a little more people, then we can harness more growth as well, economic growth, and also populate our schools, which is at a deficit. So, right now, like you said, we're done with the housing chapter, we're rezoning, and right now, we're just, the planning board at least is just having those conversations. Where should, you know, growth be? And what would that look like? Where are some of the controls? So, I think what's good about this, we're talking about it, and we want to find solutions. It's just gonna take some hard questions, there's gonna be some compromises, I think, moving forward, and we just need to understand as a community what we really want and move forward with. So, you know, I can talk a little more about the master plan process, or I can just, you know, really start hearing from you all on what your concerns are, and what you see in the community, what you're hearing from your constituents, and, you know, you know, might be a good place to start moving forward, to, you know, developing more solutions. Because eventually, any type of change besides the master plan, that's purview of the planning board to adopt, any type of zoning changes is coming through town council for adoption.
I don't know if you can see. Oh, sorry. Sorry. Yeah, so... I immediately kind of, it struck me that the conflict you're hearing of things that people want that don't really align with one another, because we're hearing a lot of the same. On the one hand, people want to see a broad array of course offerings at the school, they want AP classes, they want vocational opportunities, they want foreign languages. On the other hand, nobody wants to see their taxes go up, and declining enrollment just compounds the conflict between those things. It's something that I just, based on conversations I have with people, I don't know that the majority of people in town understand, is that increasing enrollment, the way we are set up now, would reduce the tax rate, because we would get more state aid for more students, and our investment in facilities, in people, in transportation, it's largely fixed. I mean, if we went up 15% in enrollment, yes, we'd have to add some teachers. If we go up 5%, we don't have to add a single person, not a square foot of extra space, but we'd get about four grand per student in aid from the state.
Just for an additional revenue source for the town as a whole, if we add more customers to our water and sewer, we will make more money there. It's not a drain on the system, because our system, we have, truly, we have a surplus now, again, things we wouldn't have said 10 years ago, but we wouldn't have a, we would have additional revenues there as well.
I mean, as far as revenues, Dan brings him to a point, but the board is also looking at reaching out to other communities to see if we can bring in some students, and things of that, and that's a bit...
Yeah, I mean, there's a few different ways we can approach it, but the declining enrollment is, it's hurting us on both things, that people would like to see come out of their school district, and I imagine large parts of the town operation as well.
Yeah, if I could just jump in on just decline enrollment in the school district, just to give people perspective, and you were saying, Steve, that the town as a whole's population went up in the last 12 years from 8,900 to closing in on 10,000 now. The school district population was 1,085 10 years ago, and is now 977, so it's dropped 10%. So, you can see that the two trends are opposite directions, and certainly, I don't need to remind Newmarket taxpayers that you went through a very lengthy process to decide how to deal with your schools, and you just made a very challenging decision to take on a bond to renovate our schools for, to the tune of $39 million. And so, we are paying a $2.1 million bond annually for that facility, which we have, as is noted, significant space that we, we could utilize. We could easily take on 10% more students and not blink it on.
So, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, the last session, you had mentioned reaching out to other school districts as well. What does that look like? Say we did have a big property development where an influx of families came in, and we got to the point where the amount of new students would increase the tax rate, would we then tell those communities, obviously, I don't think that you could just say, we don't have space for your kids anymore. So, what happens then?
Sure. I think Todd can probably articulate this much more than I can, but when you enter into a contract with another district, it is a multi-year process and a multi-year contract, so I'm sure there would be some caveats in there that you can't include those numbers of students that figure out some kind of factors to get out or to reduce them.
I mean, certainly, if we were to enter into any kind of a tuition-type arrangement with other community, it would be in our best interest to try to have the longer-term agreement, because if you have to staff up, or you have to do things to upgrade to accommodate those students, you don't want to have a plug pulled on it suddenly. So, it would be in our interest to do that. But, yeah, I think we'd have to look very carefully for partners that, that would allow us to gradually take students on. There are, there's a number of communities around here that do tuition agreements, and there are provisions in the contract that give like a three-year window to notify a receiving or sending a community that we will not be able to accept them anymore. Usually, you work out some kind of a transitional relationship to allow it to be phased out if that were to happen. I don't think, though, you would likely, based on what I'm hearing from this community, that there would be a sudden development that would suddenly produce 100 kids that you have to, it would be a gradual process over time.
I would look that into the category of, boy, that would be a big problem to have.
Yeah, and that's the thing, every community on the seacoast is having...
I can't hear everybody, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. If we could project.
Use your teacher voices.
Do you have a feel for how many students might be being lost to charter schools, voucher program?
It's interesting. I had a conversation with the Department of Ed just last week, trying to get exact numbers. One of the things that's, it's interesting in the, in the desire to create choice for families, the reporting requirements to the resident district, they don't have to tell us necessarily, so I don't have an exact number. To my knowledge, there are 11 students that are at charter schools that have reported to me. When I asked the Department of Ed if they could please tell me, like, how many exactly, the law does not allow them to give exact information, because it's the family's choice.
Okay, so it's not entirely charter schools, voucher program, but there is a decline in population.
Oh, yeah, I think the decline is actual decline in actual kids. I don't think...
And that's nationally, yeah. But we certainly do have kids going to private schools, charter schools, homeschooling.
If I may interject, there's a great report by New Hampshire Housing on statewide trends. Sorry. Okay. It's called From Homes to Classrooms. It's about housing and correlation of school enrollment. I highly recommend you, it looks at four different case studies, four different communities, more relevant to us, maybe Dover is closer. And so, it looks at rural and urban communities, and it really shows, paints a picture of why, how, why enrollments are falling statewide. So, I pass this around.
What's the title again?
From Homes to Classrooms. Could we get links to that? Yeah, I'll send links to everything. Just for your agreement.
I think, Phil, you were waiting to jump in.
Yeah, so, so I know during the master plan process, there's a build-out analysis, right? So, when we think about the build-out analysis, like, and even space for the type of homes that would encourage, like, families to come, like, could you share, like, just a general overview, like, what that demonstrated?
Yeah, so, basically, based on current zoning that we have, we would be fully built out by 2027.
Like, there's only so much space.
Yeah, with so much space, but even that space, there's, costs a lot to develop that new space too, because of, you know, restrictions, zoning restrictions, environmental restrictions, that it's not going to be, it won't be profitable, not profitable, like, it wouldn't be incentivized to develop it in this economy and under these regulations, so...
Just for clarification, that's under our current zoning.
Current zoning.
So, if we were to amend the zoning or change it...
It could be opportunities, but I think we wanna look at, you know, differently, not just these open parcels, but where's the redevelopment opportunities, where's opportunities to do more gentle, you know, redevelopment than, you know, maybe these larger open spaces, if, you know. So, I mean, right now, we have two major developments, a three, let's see, one closing up on Green Road off Hersi, that's gonna be closing out soon. Free railroad is being built, the Alaway Affordable is being built off Grant Road there on South Main. So, those are ongoing. The last subdivision we have, our site plan, there's two actually, one Bennett Way, it's 12 units, and the last one is on Exeter Road, right near the business park there, that's 28 units, that's it. That's all we have left. And the building, or, quote unquote, our Dave Evans did a great job showing, you know, past trends and projections on, you know, development, you know, from the building permits side, that's in front of you right here, so I encourage you to take a look at that.
So, I guess two things. One, from what's actually being built, none of those sound like they're gonna create an influx of students into the district.
No, so the 41-unit building of railroad, the high square footage, it basically studios, maybe one bedroom, but they're 500 to 600 square feet, not gonna have a family there. Alaway Affordable, you know, self-explanatory, it's age-restricted, 62-plus, so...
Is that 100%?
100%.
So, I'd like, to me, and we're not gonna, under the current zoning, we can't even build our way out of low enrollment. They could like build out everything, and we still aren't gonna get that.
There was a hurdle to build railroad, you had to get variances, and then you had to do the site plan review, so, I mean, you know, the merits of it or not, but, you know, that's, you know, what you had to go through. So, there's also some regulatory, not saying regulation's bad, but we wanna make sure that if we are gonna change it, we gotta attract it. I mean, this is a really tough economy to build anything, so...
So, I, for me, it's like, when I look at the current, sorry, I kinda finished the, that, when we look at what we currently have built out, and we look at like zoning for like the gentle, like redevelopment potentially, like, how might we be able to look at zoning to encourage other redevelopment, as opposed to like build out to encourage more families?
Yeah, for sure. You know, I think one way of looking at it is bedrooms, instead of density, when you're looking at density, you look more at bedrooms than, so dwelling units, because you can see, you have 41 dwelling units, you got maybe one kid. But if you look at bedrooms, you regulate by bedrooms, it might be an opportunity to add, you know, add enrollment, it'll be enrollment opportunities. So, I think when we're going through this process, when we're doing these development projects, if it's a larger one, we regulate by bedrooms, how you calculate the density, and then you can have a mixed-use, mixed-use community in that way, you know, so...
Just to go along with it, Newmarket, like every other seacoast town, the housing prices was created 30 years ago, and we all set two-acre minimums, and certain impact for, you know, back then, we're trying to slow it down, because we saw the influx coming. Well, we never pulled back some of those regulations when we saw the gray tsunami, the silver tsunami coming in, which was the necessity to make up some of those lost revenues and enrollments. And now, we still have the, you know, everybody, everyone wants a piece of land, but everyone has, lives on, living on two acres instead of the quarter acres they were doing in the 50s and 60s and 70s. And now, we're paying that price by not having enough housing stock. And now we're, we're paying that price by not having enough housing stock.
Can I ask you, so with that project across the street, I just don't understand how that is attractive for our community where it's, you said how many square feet?
Between 550 to 650 square feet a unit.
I mean, that's a single person or a married couple, basically, right?
Yeah.
I just, so how does something like that get approved opposed to single-family housing or multi-family units?
Yeah, well, they demonstrated through the zoning ZBA process hardship and, I mean, all the criteria according to the zoning board. So, you know, they felt that they met it and they approved it. And then, once it gets to their variances, site plan approval is making sure that the development is done soundly. You know, so, you know, they got their density bonuses, their setback, I mean, from the ZBA, through the zoning process, zoning board adjustment process, you know, all the relief that they needed. And then through site plan, making sure the stormwater works, traffic analysis, and all that's, so that's, that's how that happened.
And market-wise, they need it.
Yeah.
Well, I see that.
Yeah, so, and it's not just, again, it's not just Newmarket, it's everywhere it needs it.
41 units.
So in all of this, I'm not hearing anything along the lines of affordable workforce housing.
Yeah, I mean, the reason why, well, not to say.
That, that can have a direct correlation, the kids that are not, that are not increasing the school population, these workers in, the only industry we have in town, which is restaurants. Have a lot of nice restaurants, we're going to have them without people who do the dirty work.
Well, it's.
So they can't afford to live anywhere around here.
Right, I totally agree with you, however.
I live in, at Sleepy Hall, by the way.
Yeah.
And so that's one of the areas that has been most hard-hit in the last few years with the taxing cases. You know, there are people in there trying to make, trying to live on 30,000 to 40,000 dollars a year. I know that because we just did a, an income survey and had 75 percent response. So I take that as being pretty, a pretty good feel for what the income level is in that park. I was president for the past seven and a half years, and so got to hear it firsthand every day. And affordability of, of housing is a daily thing.
I agree with you, it's really needed, and we need to look at opportunities for different housing typologies and sizes to make it affordable. The problem is, in New Hampshire, we can't mandate affordable housing, we can only incentivize it. It's the only way, it's through state statute.
What type of incentivization is there for builders of?
Typically, the trade-off is you add more density. So, for instance, if you have developer came in and, you know, you want to provide some of them at 60 to 80 percent end area median income, the way to offset those costs, because a developer would lose more money on those, those units, is to give them more units at market rate on the same site. That's, that's how the state statute reads, we can only do that. We can't, like other communities, other states, they have provisions where you can mandate it, but right now, that's, that's where we're at. So again, it comes back to those trade-offs I, I spoke about earlier. We have a community that loves, prideful of its open space, same time, it really recognizes we need affordable housing opportunities. So I think what we need to do, in my opinion, electoralizing, is that we look at our opportunities where there's already built infrastructure. There's already been, you know, maybe there's opportunities for redevelopment. And if there are maybe those larger open spaces, all open parcels, there's opportunities to build. We have that conversation, how do we integrate those open spaces in that new neighborhood, or those new development, in a better way where everyone can enjoy? So I, I don't think it's impossible, I think we just need to talk about it and be open to ideas.
Bart, can you say a little bit about sort of, about what the concept of redevelopment looks like? I'm just, I'm not terribly familiar, and I think to sort of Emmy's point, like, what might that look like in a, such that it might attract families with kids?
Yeah, well, if we're going to talk about families, typically, more bedrooms equal families. So we're looking at three-bedroom units probably, maybe two, but let's say three. So a way to do that in redevelopment, and maybe a smaller parcel, maybe downtown, let's say, you do townhouses. Okay, you know, they take up less, less space, about six, you know, I've been doing a little bit of, bit of analysis myself, probably need like a 6,000-foot lot for a townhouse, if you're going to allow it to have a little yard or something, you know? So, you know, town, you build up the three stories, and, you know, there's about 300, you know, if you took the whole living area, it's about 3,000 square feet. So you can fit three bedrooms in that. So there's opportunities to do it that way. There's also, you can do, you know, like, some larger apartment buildings, not larger, but let's say between 12 and 15, that have two, three bedrooms in it, some of them. So I think when we're thinking, having these conversations, the way to do it is have mixed housing types. So we have some that are maybe one-bedroom, some are three-bedrooms, you know, make, so just, we're not, have a tsunami of three-bedrooms, if you will, into the community, you know? We want to kind of let this evolve in a nice pace as we're doing this. So as I'm thinking about, you know, these zoning changes, like, say if it was a larger development, you know, the way I'm thinking about it is, well, have you just had, you mandate mixed housing types? You know, so you have that influx, little influx of schoolchildren, you have older folks that can come in and move in, so you have a mixed-age community, which I think would be super beneficial for Newmarket and that future neighborhood if it were to be a neighborhood. So, and then if you have more people, then more opportunities for commerce. So that's just a couple of thoughts.
I appreciate helping me make that concrete, you've been waiting for a while.
Sure, when you talk about bedrooms, in my head, I'm thinking about myself, myself as a resident with small children. But in my head, it's how much, not how many bedrooms. I know three families in town that have recently moved into condos, sold their houses because, you know, it was great selling time, moved into a condo, downsized, had some other kids share a room because they were feeling house-poor. And they knew they could make money, and they were not selling their houses to families with children, they were selling their houses to people who can afford to buy, you know, a $700,000 house. I think a lot of those people are like, "Well, I wouldn't be able to afford my house now, myself included, because I bought it seven years ago." And so when you're talking about bedrooms, in my head, all I'm thinking is, how much is that? Because no families are coming in, whether there's two bedrooms, or one bedroom, or three bedrooms, or it's a townhouse. Those townhouses off Hersi Lane are, are $800,000. So, you know, you see not declining enrollment in some places like, you know, Epping and even, you know, beach towns, because people can rent a motel, or they can rent, you know, subpar beach housing, and then they come to the school year for part of the time. And I know that's not what we want, but I think, you know, we have to think about the way to get families in might not be to buy houses, because I don't think a lot of them can afford to do that. So.
Yeah, I think when I was saying that, I didn't say all for a purchase. You know, there's definitely, when I was saying, when I was kind of describing that, that some of them, well, some would be rentals as well, and that's some of them probably at least 50 percent.
Like, there's a few restaurant workers that I know who, like, have a studio apartment above a business in town with no parking and no trash services, and it's $1,700. So if that's for, you know, that type of, I would just question, what would it be?
Yeah, if you look at the new kind of developments, one of them, in Dover's called Point Place. You have everything from one-bedroom apartments to condenses, separate houses in there, you have townhouses in there, you know, and you have businesses in there. I think that's the thing people have to realize, too, is that a lot of the developments would have some aspect of business in them as well, to provide the services for those communities. You're seeing that pop up a lot more around the country than, it's, it's truly a mixed-use community now. And that's what people want, that is actually, that's very desirable across the country. It provides everything from, you know, rental to your, you know, but some of them go all the way to assisted living at the end. So it's just building new communities.
I'd just be curious of, like, what that ballpark would cost.
We don't, and that's the, it's the market, that's the problem.
And we can't set it, yeah. And Sunka's been waiting, and then we'll come back to you, Paul.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
We have seen an influx in residency in Sleepy Hall. The main reason being is homes that are in there, that are being sold are just about the only affordable housing available now. And we haven't had a problem keeping 100 percent residency in that park. Give you an example, I bought my home 20 years ago as of June of this year for $65,000. It's a single-wide mobile home, 972 square feet, just reassessed for $155,000.
A mobile home is a crucial.
Which is about a 25 percent increase. Mobile homes in there even now are being sold for $150,000 to $190,000. These are single-wide, one-family, most of the time two-bedroom homes. There have been a couple of double wides, which afford that extra bedroom, which afford that third bedroom, that were sold for, I believe it was $279,000 to $290,000. Were those mobile homes? They used to in years past appreciate in, in value quickly. It's not that way anymore. But again, because of the economy, because of the cost of housing in this area, that is the only thing a lot of people, especially first-time homebuyers, first-time homebuyers, that's the only thing they come for.
Yeah.
Thank you. I have two things I'd like to say, and I'm going to put them together because, you know, there's so many of us. The first one is a question to the school board members, what other, or besides tuitioning agreements with other surrounding communities, what other thoughts have you discussed regarding the future of the school? And to, you know, make it maybe the attractive place that could draw people in? Because, you know, schools are draws as well to attract people here. And what creative options are there for a school that, so, two things, we're a single, single-town, small school, there's a lot of really wonderful, attractive story that can be told around that. How can we make this, the school, you know, a really attractive place that people want to send their kids to? Not necessarily move to the town, but maybe send their kids to. So that's, I'd be interested to hear if there has been conversation like that.
And just to put a name on the, the topic, I think it's a really nice segue, Sunka, into sort of a conversation about future budget, or future projects.
And before we go there, I, I don't believe that we have so much of a housing crisis as we have a tax crisis. And I, I believe that it is, that the writing is on the wall, that we are, we are moving ourselves into a place where, you know, more and more people will find themselves to not be able to afford this community any longer, and any of the other ones around here. Because of the way homes are assessed by state law. So I would encourage all of us to have these conversations with our neighbors, so that as a town, we can join with others to begin a process, and I'm sure that there are open ears elsewhere, to change the way we assess real estate in this state. Because it is, in, for all intents and purposes, we are paying taxes on unrealized gains every year. You don't pay taxes on, you know, gains in stock every year, but you do pay taxes on unrealized gains in real estate. And that is absolutely bonkers. It's absolutely ridiculous what we're doing. And we are putting ourselves into a place that it's going to be really difficult to turn around, because, you know, we're getting used to having certain budgets as towns. So that's, I, you know, getting off that horse, but it's, I think it's a really important conversation to have because it's, you know, the road is not, the, the end of the road does not look good.
That not only unrealized gains, they're potential unrealized gains, right?
That's right, every year.
Every year. So I, I, I don't disagree with you, I think the way taxes work in New Hampshire may not be the best, and taxing homes may not be the right choice at all. I think as far as making the school attractive, certainly the renovations done a ton for that. We just came in 10th, I think, in the.
In New Hampshire.
In New Hampshire for the national, what was it?
US News and World Report rankings, yeah.
So I think the school itself is fairly attractive. We've got a great group of teachers, we're trying to make sure that they're paid fairly enough so that they retain those teachers, and we spend a lot of professional development time to increase their skill base, to make them more attractive. As far as, I think, other unique uses of the school, we've talked about enrollment from other communities. We certainly are welcome to anybody in the public who wants to use the school. People from other communities, we do charge for using the school. For nonprofits or, or organizations in the town, we generally waive those fees, so that's not really a source of revenue per se.
No, I, but it's kind of a different thing after what you said.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. But I, I don't know, I mean, I, I floated the idea of trying to get, like, Seacoast School of Technology to branch out, maybe use a part of the school. I don't know how feasible that would be, but Phil, did you?
So, I mean, so, sorry, is it different or is it one of those? It's all, it's kind of goes back to something, just go ahead, just go ahead. So, I think, yes, right, like, and we have space, we send a lot of kids to MST, and that, like, I mean, it's money right in pay at MST.
A lot.
And nothing against SST, they're fantastic, super great educational opportunity, they cannot get right now in the Newmarket. It would be an investment if we wanted to do something, space that we certainly have to do that, so you have to spend money to make money. But, I mean, we're very innovative, we're innovative about it.
We are trying to.
We're trying to be innovative at the school district, like, that, something else that's, I don't want to. It's pretense, I think I'd wish, or to say this, another thing is, we could have tuitioned groups of communities, where the community can go to become, and again, we've not talked about this, like, an open enrollment school, where anyone, like, if you just want to be one, other communities can just come here and stay and follow us. Again, it's kind of a personal education space. But like, I think there are multiple things we can talk about, because it does not sound like what we can do is build our way into that, you're saying.
Exactly right.
All right, sadly, I was going to say, building our way up, actually.
Phil?
But one thing I wanted to talk about, like, when we first, when I just got here, there was the talk about the North Gate, South Gate, and development areas. I think, kind of had a pause on that, but the idea would be that we try to develop the area, North Main Street over the bridge, Down Court, the golf course, and Ballroom, and then the idea of developing out west in the town. And I'm kind of going to on what Bart says, of, you know, we don't want to, just like on conservation, we don't want to try to, like, tear down more trees or anything, but there are plenty of places here that are either given very little use or no use that we could develop on. And while we're trying to figure out, you know, I think you're right, this is a problem with, like, some of the state law, and that's something that we work on, but we still need to, we still need houses, we still need to build them. And I think one thing to do is really go back to looking at the gates and stuff.
Just two things, one, councilors, we have 15 minutes. Two, we have not paused that.
Oh, sorry.
We are still working on it, we just can't do it, you can't shove zoning down anybody, the community's throat, we have to do it in a meaningful way. And that's part of the master planning process, and we do have grants that are looking at the rezoning of the North Main Street area from the, we've now referred to as the Dame Road area. Yeah. The Bay Road. So we are looking at that. And the next, we would look at the recreation, the three gateways to, you know, those are the places where there are, is developable land. This segue into the next thing about future projects, one of our big future projects coming up is we need to do a complete infrastructure overhaul of the Hill.
of the hill, everything Main Street up downtown. And when we do that, we're going to do, look at zoning. We're going to look at the infill, that kind of, and make sure that when we do it, we're going to, once, you know, I always say when the patient's open, do the surgery then so you don't have to go back and do it later. So we'd look at not only replacing utilities, but upgrading streetscapes, upgrading lighting, upgrading the streets themselves to encourage more infill development or redevelopment of those projects as well. Yeah, that, just to continue on the, the big projects is a good way to segue, right? Or, okay. So as the council is aware, tonight I'm presenting my budget to them. We're a little different because we're a charter, a little different that the town manager presents a budget by law. So I've already, I'm going to be coming over the budget with a 4.5% increase. I can tell you that there's no new projects in it. There's nothing out of the ordinary. It's all mainly staff-related costs, cost of living. Not, not even cost of living adjustments to salary. It's healthcare, it's other insurances. We have two projects. One is a new sewer force main off Bay Road, which we need to do because we had a leak in the river. That's pretty much funded through rates as well as grants from the state. And the second is to a stormwater project off Moody Point because we need to work on our nitrogen and other things that we put into Bay Road and that will correct that. Those are the only things we're putting forward this year. On our shelf, I've got a facility study for, two big ones on our side would be this building for what's the future of town hall, as well as the renovation of the police station. Police station was built in the early 90s. Not built for today's day and age, police station, what you need. Some of the concerns they have, it's a wooden building. It's not good for bad, when bad guys get involved. There's not enough rope, there's not enough evidence, there's not enough booking room, there's not enough office space. So if you guys want to look at the facilities that we have, it's online on my page on the website. But that, last year I was looking at about a $20 million project for both buildings. And construction, as you know, construction costs aren't going down. So, and, you know, we held off on a lot of projects on the town side for years waiting for the school solutions. And that only compounded what the cost would be. So that's why we're trying to look at that. We also have a library that needs addressing. Whether or not it's a renovation there, can't expand because it's on the spot that it's there. But if we need to have a second building or some kind of work with that. And finally, as always, and this may segue into the schools, recreation facilities. We need to look at our community center. You know, we provide a lot of recreation opportunities for younger people and older people. We need to provide recreation opportunities for everybody. We're in dire need of gym space and field space, which I believe the community as a whole is. So that's another, those are the things that we are going to be looking at on our side for future projects. And you're right, we don't have a lot of places to go for the, the.
We do know a couple of places that have gyms.
Right, yes.
As it turns out.
Yeah, absolutely.
They have very nice gyms.
Yeah, very nice gyms.
Yeah.
So I think that from a capital improvement perspective, like, I think, we've sat in the committee for a few years and like, I think it's important that we look at the whole community. Like, I think for some people, like, the school and the SOB rec, right? Because, I mean, there's a place that have gyms. Like libraries are places where there's a lot of overlap between the two. I think the mission overlap between certain aspects of the town side and the school side. And I recognize because of the few of the, this is like entities that it's hard sometimes to like collaborate, but it feels like there's opportunities to meet community needs in a more scalable way.
Completely agree. Yeah, I agree too. And I think Tom and I have talked to Steve and Tom about this a few times that, you know, if you can even create a complex, a safety complex, then included a field, some kind of larger field space and that includes the recreation group, right? I don't think it could be on that land because of the way the land is permanently, or ownership of it. But yeah, that's certainly something, I, I know we had our bite at the apple, but certainly if we could do something together, that it helps all of us, that would be a wonderful.
And we would do the same. I mean, there's no doubt any recreation development would be in discussion with the school. We already do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, the fields that are being used are all used with the school district. So I think any agreement would continue down that road.
And speaking of joining up together, we also talked about having a joint committee of facilities folks to look at all the facilities jointly and discuss our needs, their needs, where the overlap is. So I think that's really something to look forward to. As far as budgets, I know we're close on time. He was giving us the foods on. As far as budgets, we don't actually get our budget presented to us yet. We have a budget workshop tomorrow night. I do, I can tell you that the, the board has asked the superintendent to shoot for a goal of 2%. But again, we haven't had a final budget proposed to us yet.
I, I would just, going back to what, what can we do to make the schools more attractive? I do think one of the things that New Market has a real advantage in is it is a great community for families. I mean, I think it's not a coincidence that New Market shows up on the list of top communities in the Seacoast. And I think the rec department does a fantastic job. And I think partnering in those ways to really promote that. And athletic facilities absolutely is a place, we have a lot of, in fact, we talked about this all the time at the school level, you know, the middle school age, the 10 to 14-year-old kids, giving enough opportunity for them to be able to do things. Facilities hold us back. There's just not enough field space to be able to provide that kind of opportunity. So there are things like that that can be done. And I think we're already doing a great job as a community. I think this, this community has invested in itself in a way that, you know, in the last 25 years that we should be incredibly proud of. And that's what makes it such an attractive place. But obviously there are challenges. I do think the point about the tax system, I think there's no question, you know, when you look at the revale, as you were, as you were saying, your, your property went up 125%. What that means when it comes time for tax bills is compared to the higher-end properties that didn't go up by over 70%, you're relatively paying more taxes than the more higher-priced properties. That's a, that's a real problem in the tax system. It's distributing the burden to the lower end of the scale. Now, that's not a New Market specific problem because every town in, in the New Hampshire is dealing with it. But it's something we have to balance. But yeah, I, a lot of these projects that have been suggested, absolutely, they're great things, but we have to figure out how to do it without excessively burdening the taxpayers.
And then this reality that nationally, there's less kids, right? We're graying as a country. So how do we, how do we get the few kids that are there available, I guess, to come to New Market or to the state again?
Trade point.
Because that's a large challenge.
We've got about eight minutes and I think we talked a little bit about facilities. We've got, we want to talk a little bit about Community Power. And so what, I'll, I'll turn that over to you, Joe.
Can I dive into that?
Yeah, please.
Well, first a disclaimer. Some of you may know I'm on the Board of Directors for our Community Power Coalition. I get absolutely no compensation. All the directors are volunteers, including the chair. And so I get no compensation, there's no conflict of interest here. Community Power went live last year. In the year and a half that they've been live, they now represent, supply 40%, pretty much 40% of electric to New Hampshire customers. New Market went live, New Market Community Power went live earlier this summer. In the short period of time that we've been live, we've saved New Market residents $14,000. Keep in mind that the difference between EverSource's rate and the Community Power rate was only 0.2%. This latest rate period is 2.5 cents or closer, closer to 2.5 cents. So we expect going forward that the savings for Community Power, New Market Community Power residents will be significantly greater. Community Power is looking to launch a 12-month plan that runs from July of 2025 through June of 2026. I would like permission from the town and the school to facilitate a meeting with the facilities manager and whoever on the town side to talk about, meet with Community Power officials and talk about maybe getting the school and the town onto Community Power at a cheaper rate. One of the things I'm working on with them on this 12-month rate is that at the end of the 12-month period, there would be an audit. And they would look at what did it actually cost to buy the electricity and what did it cost to administer that program? And the remainder of the profit, whatever, that would have gone into Community Power's reserves, I'm asking them to actually cut a rebate check that goes back to the schools or the facilities. And so it's actually a at-cost program. So I'm asking for permission to facilitate meetings between the groups to see if we can get them onto Community Power. New Market would kind of be one of the first guinea pigs that would be on this program.
I don't think that needs the board approval. I think the superintendent.
I would be, I would be happy to entertain that meeting.
We would do it, probably have a de-process and, yeah.
Okay, well, I don't want to go talking to somebody and they get my hand slapped because I've already done that before.
Yes, I'm happy to help facilitate that. I think it's a great conversation to have.
Okay, excellent, thank you. So I'll send you a note and Steve and I'll set up something.
Any last questions for Bart before we go?
We'll make sure we send out that, my buddy.
I know you do a ton of work and a ton of extra hours, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Wonderful community, so thank you.
And one of the next actions that we kind of had a conversation about is Community Power's, or, progressions, so start them even out. Get that set up. And if there are no objections, then I will.
Just want to throw one other thing out.
There is an objection.
There is objection. One of the other projects that the council approved, put on the ballot for March, is the forming to ask the voters to form another charter commission for the town, to review this town government structure. It doesn't affect the school district, it's only the town side. But in case you see that, some people ask that, then the process is at the school district as well. It's not.
But it would have potential changes that in the town could have impact on how the school district functions, given that we have such a close.
Yes, I think we have to function more independently, right? Because you go away from SP2, is that?
We don't, we have to wait till the commission formed, they have a good decision.
One of the ideas, yeah.
Can I ask why?
We, part of the discussion when the last one was formed, they said, well, maybe we should look at it every 10 years. We've been looking at a few things that we could see that may want some tweaking in the, in the charter. And still, we're one of the very few communities our size who have elected planning board. It's not common. And there's some other things that just have a bigger view. Instead of doing a couple of changes, look at everything. And it's usually a 10-year, so, and it's, it's a year-long.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so before we conclude, thank you very much for the invitation again. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thanks for doing that. All right. There is a question? I'll keep there, it's Joe. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
About the Exeter Hospital ALS and they discontinued the ALS paramedic intercept program, although occasionally we do use Exeter ALS. We've increased our own paramedics. And for a number of years, we've been trying to bring more paramedics on onboard through volunteers as well as our own staff. So we've to avoid depending on Exeter ALS. So we're actually in a good position. And also, we've been working with McGregor Ambulance to provide mutual aid. So yes, we do have some calls from Exeter ALS when we don't have a paramedic on staff, but we also have McGregor as a backup. On the flip side is, we provide paramedic service to other communities as mutual aid when necessary. That's money in our coffers. So just want to give that. And now, the budget. You go to present the fiscal year 26 budget. Just as I always do, I like to go over a little bit of the state of the economy. First thing I look at is the unemployment rate for the United States. It's actually gone up. Last year was 3.8%. Now we've seen a 4.5% at the end of July. For the state, it also has gone up. It's a 2.9% unemployment rate, 1.9% for the state. County is 2.9% is up as well. Port of Metro is up at 2.5, 1.7, and New Market's at 2.3, over 1.5% for unemployment. Also, I want to show the Consumer Price Index. The Consumer Price Index is the percentage increase on goods for your livable goods like food, oil, those kind of items. We actually did not see as large of an increase as we have over the last few years. So that means inflation is slowing. The United States saw an increase of CPI at 2.9%, which was a decrease of the increase last year of 3.2. 8.5 was the year after the pandemic where you had the hydroinflation. The Northeast saw a 3.2%, which was slightly higher than last year at 2.6. In Boston, which we are a part of and we use mostly for our figures, there are slight increases at 3.2% or 2.8. So you're seeing that slowing of inflation happen. I wanted to show the council just an estimated tax rate of the current fiscal year. This is an estimate. It's not been set yet, as I said earlier in our previous meeting. We're waiting for the DRA to set this with us, but this is what we're estimating. As you can see, what we're discussing as this part of the budget is 24% of the entire tax rate, which is the town, or $4.37 per thousand. The largest portion is what goes to education. At 67%, goes to local school. 6% goes to state school. When we say state school, it's not money that goes to state that comes back. That's money that we have to raise on behalf of the state. So they don't get money back from cash. And the last portion, which goes to the county for their services, is at 54 cents per thousand. And this is just a tax rate comparison. As you can see, the gray line is the middle box. Maybe the blue box is the gray is the town. We've been pretty steady. You see the reduction this year due to the fact of the revaluation, but we've not had a large increase in our tax rate fluctuation over time. This is the figure that I discussed earlier and what we look at. Why do we look at assessed valuation? That's how we determine how much money we can raise. As everybody knows, we had a significant increase in the assessed valuation of $700 million from 2023 to 2024. What that means is, instead of $1 per thousand, for every dollar we've raised on the tax rate is $1 million, it's now $1.7 million for every dollar of tax rate. And I just threw this in because I knew we didn't have a lot of debt. I wasn't at that meeting. But I wanted to show the valuation of the town over from 2001 to 2024. In 2004, the valuation of the town was 665,000, 665,467,941. Then we had the Great Recession, and if you notice, it was pretty flat. And it actually went down a little to 711,970,612, 10 years ago. Then, five years ago, we were already at 977,205,828. Now we're at 1.7 billion. So we've added almost $1 billion to our value in five years. And that's everywhere on the seco. So we had 142,000, 142% in the last 10 years. And that just shows the tax ratio. As I, you know, one of the things I've always been telling the council is, we like to be near 100%. Our problem was, last year, we were only at 59% value. And now we're up to all the green or where we have a revaluation. The interesting year is the 2008, 2009 when we had a revaluation, there was very little change in the property. And a lot of people's property values actually dropped because of the Great Recession. I could tell you, the reval hearings were negligible that year. Those people did not come in. But yeah, so it does happen. It's cyclical. You will see years that the values do drop if an economic catastrophe happens, to use the term.
Can, I know you've explained this before, but can you explain to me again, what exactly is the tax ratio? Why is it 99% right now?
Because we're almost at 100% value. We're almost at pure market value. So if your house is assessed at $600,000, it's worth $600,000. Last year, if your house was valued at $350,000, it's actually only worth, it's only valued at 60%.
I see.
So it goes up. That's the ratio.
Thank you.
So you basically have an increasing, like a scissor going up, like as you go away from the last evaluation, you, there's, you know, less, it's no longer aligned with the market.
Exactly. So, recommended budget. I am proposing a budget of $18,476,675 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. A 4.46% increase, a total increase of $788,844. For the general fund, it's a $591,308 increase. Special revenue funds, which is library, solid waste, and special, the recreational revolving, an increase of $92,706. And the enterprise funds, $104,830. And that's just to show, so general fund makes up 61% of the budget at 11.2 million. Enterprise funds, which is water and sewer, makes up 27% at 5 million. The special revenue is at $2.1 million, or 12%. And the reason why general fund is separate, general fund is with, most of the revenues come through taxation. Special revenue has revenues such as the fees for the recreation and solid waste that offsets it. And enterprise funds is completely separate. It's water and sewer, the rate payers. So where's it going? Well, human resources, as I mentioned, is the big part, is 8% increase and $182,000. Payroll fringe benefit costs are a large part of that, as well as healthcare. We are seeing, we've got a guaranteed maximum rate increase of 9% in our healthcare fees, costs. Police department, we're seeing a 5.2% increase in salaries. That was a contractual renegotiated collective bargaining agreement at $115,984. Welfare, we're seeing a $5,000 increase in rental assistance. We are seeing additional requests for that. Assessing, it's $11,000 for assessing software. We're seeing a lot of increase in software contracts. And for anybody in the business, you don't buy software anymore. You subscribe to software now. So we're just seeing that increase. Legal's increased by 15%. We just haven't had an increase in legal in years, and we looked at their agreement. Good thing is, we're on a retainer. We do not get billed hourly by them. So we do not have fluctuations of a, large cases not impact our budget as much. And street lighting, we're seeing a 12.7% due to increase in ever-source costs there. Streetlights aren't like your home. It's not hourly. It's turn on, turn off. That's what we have to pay. So that's really what we're seeing for increases. We're not, no new positions, no other increases to this budget. We are looking at 2%, 3% to warrant articles. First is $100,000 bond for planning and design of the Bay Road Force Main replacement. This loan will be taken out by the state revolving funds and we have $100,000 of forgiveness. So there'll be no impact. We're also looking at $5.5 million bonds or notes for replacing the Bay Road Force Main and pump station. And we're looking at and trying to secure $2.5 million potentially with congressionally directed spending. So that remaining amount would have to be raised through tax, the rate payers, not taxpayers, excuse me. And finally, is a $1.4 million cushion in road in Loverland Drive stormwater improvement project. This would have $360,000 principal forgiveness, and I estimate a 7 cent on the tax rate for year one on any loan that would need to be there. Here is, I know, I apologize if I didn't realize it was so small to put up there. That's why you're hard trapping the front view. Our contributions to capital reserves, I know this is always a big discussion. And this is, our capital reserves are our savings accounts. And, you know, you'll see a big fluctuation from the department head to mine. And the reason is, department heads are looking for what they want to save. I have to look at the bottom line for the overall budget. So Public Works has requested $123,000 to be placed in their account. I said $75,000. Building improvement, we both said zero. Roadway is, I agreed and said $250,000. Excuse me. Stormwater is looking for 85. I said 50. Fire Department requested 51. I agree. I said, for police dispatch, they're requesting 29. I said 15. $2,000 for Veterans Memorial Trust. I actually bumped up the 300th anniversary trust. The 300th anniversary is coming up. So we want to try to get some more money to them. So they asked, we had 2,000 in there. I bumped it up to 5. Recreation was requesting 85,000. I bumped that to, I said 25,000. Level funded it. Master plan, 10,000. We're in the process of it. Level funded that for 10. IT, most of the others I level funded except for sidewalks. They request 125,000. I said 20,000. The departments requested 127,955 in capital contributions, capital reserves. I had 543,000, which is actually a reduction of 1% or $3,000. Finally, the revenue budget. It's, you need to look at both sides when we do the budget. Last year, our revenue budget was $10.3 million. I'm anticipating a revenue budget this year. When we do this, it's an estimate. We have a chance in the fall to revise our revenues to, if there was a shortfall, to find other places to raise that. And we're looking at a revenue of 10.8, a budget of $10.8 million. This slide is an estimate, only using the data as we have today. I always put that out there. So it's just, again, I guess, an estimate. And that's the estimated tax impact. This is how we determine that, figure out the tax rate. So the gross appropriation of the town would be $18,476,675. Then you subtract our revenue estimates of $10,807,293. I always put the less shared revenues in because that's the money that the state has promised us and they don't give us anymore. We have to add overlay, which is our abatements. And we usually average about $20,000 abatements. Then we add war service credits. When you amend the war service credits, this is where we have to make up that difference. So we have to, that's where we have to charge. So we have to add another $145,000. So the net town appropriation is $7,834,382. So then you divide that number by $1,723,789,642, and you come to a tax rate of $4.52, which would be estimated at this point, a 15 cent increase over the previous year. That does not include that one article for the 7 cents.
And this is just the town?
Yes, the town. And as I said, the council will have a discussion on this on October 6th, beginning at 9:00 AM. Oh, October 26th, sorry. Beginning at 9:00 AM. Yeah, Saturday morning. And we'll try to get everybody in and out for Halloween haunted after that.
Okay. 26. Vote results. Excellent. Okay. Any questions or questions for the town manager or discussion on the town manager report, department reports, or the proposed budget? Counsel Lamontina?
If we have questions, submit them to you. And
Yeah, if you have some ahead of time that we can do, need research, do it that way. And at least the department heads can do some backup. And we'll provide that with you that day, too.
So, right to you?
Yeah, you can do that. Actually, that's great. So we can do more research into it.
Okay. Counsel Blackstone?
I have, well, it may sound like a stupid question, but as you know, one of the Supreme Court justices was arrested today. And is that going to impact our clay thing?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for discussion for the town manager on budget, department reports, or the report of the town manager? Yeah.
Just a quick question. Hopefully, the, it's the, are the streetlights, is that a contract that we have with ever-source, or is that something that happens by default?
Default, yeah. You can look into it, but yeah. We switched over to LEDs. Everybody did LED recently.
Yeah.
And that saved us a ton of money, but it's default.
Solar cells don't work very well at night.
No, it's not about solar cells. It's just about, you know, whether ever-source has to be the provider.
Yeah.
Power.
Mike, that's kind of where I was going with that.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for the town manager? Town manager, thank you very much. Okay. Next item, item seven, is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Counsel Lamontina?
Yeah, I'm totally unprepared. This Friday, is a charrette for the riverfront. Okay. So at 3:30 and at 6:30, people can come and give information or supply some information on how they would like the riverfront to be utilized, issues that they may have with the riverfront.
And where is that?
And that would be downstairs in the auditorium.
And then on Saturday at 3:00 PM is a public presentation and recommendations from those findings from the charrette group. So you can find out the recommendations after.
Saturday, 3:00 PM? Also in the downstairs?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Lamontina.
And just for the council's, we're, staff is doing it at 1 o'clock on Friday. So if you don't see us at it, that's why, because we're doing it earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I believe all of us are invited to that session at 1 o'clock as well
Absolutely.
to provide input to the
Yeah, they prefer us not to be, and sometimes not do it with the general public because we don't want to influence the public. Because sometimes they feel as comfortable to comment if they're there.
Okay. Counsel Dombal?
Yes, the Transportation Policy Advisory Committee met last Wednesday. We had presentations from Strafford Planning Commission in their role as a service provider to the town with the master plan revision, going over the work that we will need to do in order to revise the transportation chapter of the plan. And that's what we are planning to be doing for the next couple of meetings as well. And there may be a, there's a prospective new member for the committee as well, which is exciting. So that there are a couple more voices around the table is always welcome.
Thank you, Counsel Dombal. Any questions? Okay. Any other committee reports this evening? Okay. Then we will move on to item nine, which is resolutions and ordinances in the second reading. And this evening, there are four. And so the first resolution is Resolution 2024-2025-11. That is the resolution appropriating $12,500 from the Technology Capital Reserve Fund for the replacement of a town sewer. This
Server.
Server, sorry. It's like, why are we speaking? Thank you. It's like, God, my brain is just not having it today. Okay. It's the mice, telling me. Okay. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counsel. Ward, do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counsel Lamontina. Town manager?
Just an explanation. Our current server's at replacement age is over four years old. And we want to make sure we have uninterrupted service. We can receive two bids. One from Back Bay Network, who's our current IT consultant, as well as CDW government branch. CDWG was at $9,404, and Back Bay Network was at $8,980. And they're recommending that we withdraw $8,980 from the capital reserve fund to purchase a new server.
Any questions for the town manager or discussion on this resolution? You mentioned this, but if we're withdrawing 89, about 8,900 and change, this is approving 12,500.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Could be some other associated installation things that may have.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments, if you could call the roll.
Counsel Gwaisberg?
Aye.
Counsel Lamontina?
Aye.
Counsel Dombal?
Aye.
Counsel White?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Ward?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Motion passed as soon as
I'm so glad we're not taking funds from technology to fix a sewer. Okay. The next resolution in the second reading is Resolution 2024-2025-12. And this is the septic receiving station final design and bidding. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counsel Lamontina. And then we'll turn it over to you, Director Greig.
Just a little background. Everyone knows we've been trying to work towards putting a new septic receiving station, because we take between five and six million gallons of septic a year. We're trying to move it because currently we take it down at the Creighton Street pump station, which is not designed for it, and it's also right in the park. And we're trying to get everything out of there. So it's safer and it smells a little better for the community. So this is just to get the final engineering done. The equipment comes in in November. So we're hoping to put this out to bid and start construction in the spring.
Okay. Questions for Director Greig?
About how long do you think, rough estimate, I know you have no way of time, but do you think that it'll take to construct it, to finish the project?
I would hope that it'd be done by fall, but it really depends on what the availability of the people bidding and how we set up that schedule.
Thank you. Other questions for the director? Any discussion from counselors on this resolution? Okay. I'm seeing none. If you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Gwaisberg?
Aye.
Counsel Lamontina?
Aye.
Counsel Dombal?
Aye.
Counsel White?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Ward?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Motion passed as soon as
Okay. The next resolution in the second reading this evening is Resolution 2024-2025-14, the Bay Road Force Main preliminary design. At this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel White. And I will turn it over.
Okay. As you know, last year, we had a break in the main for the Bay Road Force Main that leaked into the Landbury River. It cost us $258,000 to fix 15 feet of it. Pipe is in very poor condition. We've been applying for loans and grants for this. And it's going to take us some time to actually get this designed to get to going forward. So we're asking money to, for that money for design, to start that preliminary design, to get it going.
Okay. Any questions for the director? Okay, Counsel Dombal. And then we'll go to you, Counsel.
So we fixed 15 feet of the Force Main. What are we, what are we replacing with this project?
It'll be, so entirely, we have actually two options that we're looking at. One is to go up Bay Road so it won't be in the water anymore, or under the river, per se. We're looking to run it up Bay Road, across the Veterans Bridge, and then back down Pennstock Way, and reconnecting back to where it tied in in the first place. Or we're also looking into running it up Bay Road through Bryant Rock, across the footbridge, and replacing the footbridge at the same time, and then going down Pennstock Way. And we've applied, and we have some grants already. We have applied for a congressional direct spending grant of $2.2 million. So we're waiting on that. We should hear that, on that probably by earliest December, the latest April.
So that, how will the decision be taken? Which, which it will go, and would you have a preference?
We're on easement negotiations right now. My preference is to, is to go the bridge way. But, you know, it's a private
Footbridge way.
Footbridge way, correct, sorry. But, you know, that's a legal issue with private property.
And obviously, they're announcing like the decision.
Yeah.
Counsel Lamontina?
I'm also to answer my question on the roaming.
Okay. I mean, maybe it's a question, maybe it's a confirmation. So the work that we're talking about now, the original sort of repair was, like, we got it stopped, but it's not really solving the fundamental problem of the just tremendous sort of wear and poor condition of the pipes. Like, we got it stopped, but it's going to continue to leak if we don't have a more permanent solution?
We need to solve the long-term issue. That's the bottom line.
We need to take it out of the roaming.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or any discussion on this resolution? Counsel Dombal?
Just around the easement. Is there any input? How is that being handled? How is that conversation being conducted? Who's involved in it?
We're, we're negotiating now with the condominium association. Any easements will have to come back to the council for final approval.
So it's an ongoing conversation that's
Yeah, yes.
Any other discussion from counselors? I'll weigh in briefly and just say once again that I appreciate, appreciate the directors', you know, efforts in getting, in applying for grants and, you know, loan, and options with loan forgiveness. I agree that, that I appreciate the work that the town has done to, you know, do the repair, but I agree that we need a, we need a permanent solution. And I'm glad that it's moving forward. Okay. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll.
Counsel Gwaisberg?
Aye.
Counsel Lamontina?
Aye.
Counsel Dombal?
Aye.
Counsel White?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Motion passed as soon as
Okay. And the last resolution in the second reading this evening is Resolution 2024-2025-15, Waste Water Collection System Repairs Engineering. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Counsel Lamontina. It is the Director Greig Show.
We, as you may remember, we actually videoed 50,000 linear feet of pipe to identify problems in the sewers. We have received a loan grant from the state revolving loan, which the town has voted on and approved. And what this does is puts the engineer on board to secure the people that are going to do the repairs. So they're going to write the bid package and then oversee the work.
Okay. Questions for Director Greig? Any discussion on, counselors, on this resolution? Okay. Same thing. This, it's been shown as a tremendous need for repairs, and I'm glad that we're doing the work of getting it done because that is all to making, you know, improving and maintaining the quality of life for new market residents. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Gwaisberg?
Aye.
Counsel Lamontina?
Aye.
Counsel Dombal?
Aye.
Counsel White?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Ward?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Motion passed as soon as
Okay. All right. Counselors, it is time for item 10 on our agenda, and that is resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. And this evening, there are also four. The first resolution is Resolution 2024-2025-16, whereas the, whereas the Bay Road Force Main is in poor condition and needs to be replaced, and whereas the cost to perform preliminary engineering is $254,300, and whereas the sewer capital reserve fund has a balance of $2,265,342. a balance of $2,265,342. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Town Council authorizes the withdrawal of $254,300 from the sewer capital reserve fund for Wright Pierce to perform preliminary design and bidding for the new Bay Road Force Main. Sponsored by Chair Conley by request, first reading, October 16th, 2024. Okay. Next item is Resolution 2024-2025-17, that is the Moonlight Brook Stormwater Investigation, whereas the town of Newmarket received a Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF, loan in the amount of $73,500 from the Newmarket, I'm sorry, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, NHDES, to be used for the Moonlight Brook Stormwater Investigation Project. And whereas town staff would like to partner with GeoSynTech Consultants Incorporated on this project, and whereas this town staff has negotiated a scope of work and associated fee for this project not to exceed $73,500, which will be paid from the aforementioned CWSRF loan. Now therefore be it resolved that by the Newmarket Town Council, that the Newmarket Town Council authorizes the Moonlight Brook Stormwater Investigation Project and further authorizes the town manager to execute any documents necessary to complete the project. Sponsored by Chair Conley by request, first reading, October 16th, 2024. The next resolution in the first reading is Resolution 2024-2025-18, Ash Swamp Road Culvert Preliminary Design, whereas the town of Newmarket received a grant funding subaward in the amount of $99,608 from the Nature Conservancy, TNC, to be used for pre-construction activities associated with the Ash Swamp Road Culvert Replacement Project. And whereas town staff would like to continue partnering with Wright Pierce on this project, and whereas the town staff has negotiated a scope of work and associated fee for preliminary design tasks for this project not to exceed $99,608, which will be paid from the aforementioned grant. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Newmarket Town Council authorizes the Ash Swamp Road Culvert Preliminary Design Tasks and further authorizes the town manager to enter into agreements with Wright Pierce and execute any documents necessary to complete the preliminary design tasks for this project. Sponsored by Chair Conley by request, first reading, October 16th, 2024. And finally, in the first reading, Resolution 2024-2025-19, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2026 Budget, whereas the town manager submitted his budget for the fiscal year to the Town Council on October 15th, 2024, and whereas the Town Council, after reviewing the proposed budget and making various changes, desires to forward the municipal budget committee a proposed budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the annual budget for the town of Newmarket for fiscal year 2026 submitted to the Town Council by the town manager recommends to the municipal budget committee for its review the following appropriations. To the general fund, $11,280,738. To special funds, $2,132,670. And enterprise water and sewer funds, $5,63,267, for a total of $18,476,675. Sponsored by Chair Conley by request, first reading, October 16th, 2024. Okay. Folks, we're on to item 11, New Business and Correspondence. Item eight, correspondence to the Town Council. Is there any correspondence to the Town Council to be read into the record this evening?
There is, but while I have the floor, I just wanted to ask the council to take a minute after. You need to sign a warrant for the general election. What that is, is it literally says to command the people to bring in your votes for President of the United States, but you need to sign it to do that. Command the people?
Just for the sake of being different?
That's quite a responsibility.
It is.
I'm looking at the part where it says, we can command people?
Okay. So no correspondence. All right. At this time, the floor is open for closing comments by town councillors. Do any councillors have closing comments this evening? Councilor Glazberg?
With the Halloween Haunt coming up, October 26th, the mural in the pocket park at Johnny Bosson's will be flipped at 3:00 PM. So we'll have some people there that will be, somebody doing a poetry reading, some other things going on. The kid, the kids in town that are participating in the haunt will be at the rec, so it'll be more adult-centric until, you know, the kids are out, and then there'll be some sort of candy offering, potentially moving up in front of the, the new mural in town.
And that's 3:00 PM?
3:00 PM, yes. On October 26th.
October 26th. Thank you, Councilor Glazberg. Any other closing comments by councillors this evening? I believe we'll have one other, we have one other meeting beforehand, but, oh, next meeting, November 6th, 2024. Vote, please, everybody, regardless, regardless of the document we sign, please, please, please vote.
Just for the, you do have one other meeting before November 6th?
Oh, we do.
You have, no, before November 6th, we have October 26th.
Yeah, the workshop session, yes. So the next Town Council official meeting is November 6th, 2024. And if there are no objections at this time, then I will consider us adjourned.